I want to give notice that we did have an executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss legal issues. There are a couple of changes to the agenda, things that are being removed. The police commendations under the presentation sections is not going to happen tonight. We had some scheduling issues and we'll bring that at a future meeting. So, the other thing that's being removed on the consent agenda is item 2E because that's going to be put out to bid, the carpet update. And then, I guess that's it. Public participation is first, a general public participation. If anybody would like to come and speak, you get five minutes. Just give your name and your street and have at it.
Great, thank you. My name is Robert Fahey. I live in Inverary on Lindsay Circle. Thanks for the opportunity to be heard today. We're back talking about the Willows noise issue. And so, I'm Robert. My wife Susan's here. You've heard from her several times about this. We've been Radnor residents for 36 years, very happily. We've lived in Inverary for about five of those. And we've been trying, along with many people standing in front of me and behind me, to find a solution to what we really think is a public nuisance that we deal with for many weekends for five or six months of the year. And we're kind of in mid-season of that right now and to the point where last night I really was looking forward to sitting on my deck and watch some baseball and maybe the end of the football. And the noise was so loud that we had to go inside. So, it's front and center many, many days. And we've been here off and on, I guess, for two to three years, talking to WPP, talking to the board, talking to various professionals within the township. So, that's a little background. I'll be brief. I just plan to share a few observations, kind of current observations that I've made and others have, an opinion or two about what the threshold issues are here, what really needs to happen to move this forward. And then, I'm going to turn it over to two of my neighbors, Chick and John, to kind of play cleanup batters for me. So, I've heard and read through conversations with the people that are in this room, some reports that are done on a weekly or twice a month basis, depending on how active the Willows is, that some people think that it's gotten better. It's less quiet, it's more under control, people are being more considerate, people are doing a better job of trying to manage the noise. I'll tell you, as a neighbor, that is simply not accurate. I'm not saying anybody's not telling the truth, but if you pull into our driveway, which is, one of the driveways is close to the Willows as you can get, a moment in time, it might sound kind of quiet, but maybe they're eating salad, maybe this, maybe that. But I believe that it has not gotten better, it's gotten worse. We have 47 events there this year. That's about two times what we had last year. More of those 47 in the aggregate have music than they did last year as a percentage. So, it's gotten louder. The crowds somehow have gotten louder. I don't know how that happens, but it has. And the dads speak louder when they're giving their toast. And we're not saying that they're not allowed to give a toast or be loud, but just put all that together, more people, more events, more music, it's simply louder. And that's before you even get into the DJ issue, which is a big, big issue that we'll talk about in a moment. So, I just have three recommendations from my two or three years of observing. I really think there's a lack of leadership on this issue within the aggregate. I'm not saying it always here, but it's a township issue, it's a public nuisance. I'm not empowered to fix it. I can't arrest people and can't go in and pull the plug. I believe that someone within your purview, your group, needs to pick a leader and lay this issue on their lap and empower them to fix it. Because every big issue I've ever been involved with in life and business and real estate and leases, my area of expertise, without a leader, nothing happens. And this has been going on for at least three years. There isn't a leader, nobody has ownership. I think a lot of people might think it's a little radioactive for a lot of reasons that we've talked about, but it's got to get fixed. And without a leader, it won't get fixed. I have a friend who's a cardiologist. The advice he gives his patients is, "Put the fork down." Right? That'll get you better fast. And I think what we need to do here is figure out a way to turn the volume down. Because without that volume control being under the control of one person, not the DJ, not the dad, we got to figure out a way to put a master volume control there that somebody controls. And then, lastly, you know, the lease. The lease is not being enforced. I doubt people even read it. But they're not allowed to do what they're doing. They're a public nuisance, they're causing confusion, they're causing lots of noise and disturbance for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public participation.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Spatako. I live in Inverary. I've lived there since 2016. To the point of leadership, I just wanted to take a moment and thank Commissioner Abel because, you know, obviously, he's our commissioner in our ward, but he has, you know, lent a very kind ear to our, you know, constant feedback. And as I know, watching a few meetings, I know he's brought up the issue. And so, my frustration has to do with sort of what Robert said, which is, you know, where do we go from here? Who has the ball? Okay? The lease, I'm not an attorney, but the lease does say, "The WPP acknowledges and agrees that it will access and use the lease premises in such a manner as to not interfere with nor cause disturbance to Radnor residents using the park and/or residing at or near the park." Well, clearly, that has been violated. So, I guess I, one question is, what happens? So, who's the recourse? I think the recourse is who signed the lease, which is the Board of Commissioners, obviously, albeit a different board at that time, I don't know if it's 2020 or whatever. But I think it is the Board of Commissioners' responsibility to, as Robert would say, enforce the lease because this clause at least is being violated. I can tell you, I'm a sort of amateur musician as well. So, I found one of the gentlemen who I think the township had spoken with at one point and maybe received a proposal, which is Nick Mondo, you know, whose resume in the sound enforcement, reinforcement businesses, you know, goes from the White House to many, many, many large events. And he made a proposal, I met with him out there myself before anyone at the township did. And he gave a very specific proposal with, having to do with speaker direction and speaker placement and this sort of thing. Now, things have been done. There's been some, you know, landscaping, there's been new speakers, speakers have been changed in, you know, in direction. There was, there was an investment, some of these investments in sound equipment and an iPad for controlling it were never really used. I know that for a fact because, again, I tried to do a test over there. I met with someone from WPP. The answer was, "I don't know how to use it." So, I sort of questioned, who's the boss in all of this? But I can tell you, as a musician, that if I took an acoustic guitar and sat on that, on the patio, the beautiful patio, someone probably near the street could hear it. Sound travels outside, it's as simple as that. To me, the solution is to move the music inside, which is what used to be the case. I didn't see anything about a tent in the lease. Now, whether that was put up for COVID or not is kind of moot at this point, right? I think that, you know, the music needs to move inside. Now, if there's a toast or something and we have five minutes or 10 minutes of ambient noise that a proud father wants to talk about his daughter or his new family, that's terrific in my opinion. 10 minutes is one thing, three hours is another. When you can dance on my back patio and know the words, that's a problem. So, I would just say that it's a, it's a problem that is now defined in here, but it's a solvable problem. Okay? I don't think, without putting some kind of enclosure, that you can continue to have things outside. And that would cost quite a bit of money, but that could be done also. So, I understand that the money is coming in and that sort of thing, but, you know, there has to be some kind of compromise. And we're not trying to be unreasonable because, again, there was no, there's no sanction for outside of, you know, music in this lease. So, I would just ask, who's in charge? Who's going to take charge? Because we've heard township talk about WPP. WPP points to Peachtree, Peachtree points to the Bride, and then you have many different stakeholders. And that's, that's what the matrix looks like, but there has to be some kind of governing body in my opinion. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's John Ball, and you've heard from my wife Eleanor on this issue before. We live at 608 Lindsay Circle. The first thing I want to do tonight is share a note from our immediate next-door neighbor, Jerry Shiano. Jerry lives at 610 Lindsay Circle. As similar to Eleanor and John, Robert and Susan, Jerry's home backs up to the Willows, right across Darby Peoli Road. Jerry's sorry he couldn't be here at the meeting tonight to read this note himself, but he's recovering from a medical procedure, so he asked that I would share his comments. And here's what he has to say. "My community has been working with the township to try to resolve the issue of the noise from weddings and parties at the park for quite some time. While it's better than it was when it first came up, the sound really travels from the park to our community, and unfortunately for the residents of Inverary, especially those whose yards face the park, it truly disturbs the quality of life during the party season. I'm sure the revenue from the park is important to the township, but I'm hopeful there is a better, lower sound solution that takes more into consideration in Inverary." From my perspective, when I think about the last three to four years, there's just been a lot of talk without any solution. And I know this isn't an issue that you all want to tackle, and I'm sure some of you think that we're making much ado of nothing. Last night at 8:30, Eleanor and I were walking home from a neighbor's home, up the hill, so not on Lindsay Circle, on Inverary Circle, or Inverary Road, excuse me. Walking home, what do we hear but the party? And it's like, why is that on a Sunday night? That's silly. And yet, it can happen on a Friday night, it can happen on a Saturday night, and it can happen on a Sunday night. And now, it happens 47 times a year this year, as Robert has shared. We're tired of calling the police. We're tired of having to come to these meetings. We need some leadership. And when I think, you know, we were coming in tonight, walking into this terrific building, what's the township label? Best of the main line? I think to myself, well, if LM can get it right with Appleford, why the heck can't we in Radnor, the best of the main line, get it right? And I think that means getting an expert involved. It might cost a couple of dollars, but I think it's essential because right now, what it is, is a true public nuisance for us. And what we're starting to hear, and we're going to gather information around this, is the issue isn't just in Inverary. We heard just the other day that there's a family that's over near Mill Dam who's actually heard it and been wondering where the heck the noise is coming from. So, we're going to track that down, we'll present that to you. But this isn't just a Ball family and a Fahey family and a Jerry Shiano family problem. This is a community problem and we need it to be taken care of. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your input. Any further public participation?
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue. This is something I was going to discuss under 2E about the carpeting, but I'm going to bring it up. So, it's a series of questions, and I know you're not going to answer me, but I'm going to ask them because I'd like to get the information. What surface is under this rug? Particularly in this room and in the poe's room. Is it plywood? Is it pergo? Is it concrete? What is it? When was this carpeting installed? And how many times has it been replaced? Since what, 2006 or '07 is when the building was finished? Eight, when it was finished? How often is this rug vacuumed? How often is it shampooed? And then, I'm going to refer, because I'm not the only person who's concerned with this, to an article in the Journal of Environmental for Public Health. And the abstract says, "Several earlier studies have shown that the presence of more dust and allergens in carpets compared with non-carpeted floors causing adverse effects on indoor air quality and the worsening of symptoms with individuals with asthma and allergies." So, it is recommended that extensive carpeting not be used. So, I'd like to suggest that instead of the carpeting on the stairs, it be replaced with rubber treads. What wearout gives you a sturdier surface to walk up and down on, particularly as an older person. And I would really like to understand those, what is in this room, what's under this room. And here's a very pragmatic offer. What about doormats? I don't think anybody coming into this building thinks to wipe their feet before they come in, which might remove half of what they're tracking in. Because I know I tracked stuff into my house. I have big outdoor carpets before I come into my house. So, is that a simple answer for an ongoing situation? Do you have outdoor carpets and ask people to wipe their feet? So, those are the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public participation? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, once I stop my timer. Is there any item a commissioner or a member of the public would like to pull from the consent agenda tonight? Remembering that 2E has already been pulled. No, seeing none. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Commissioner Larkin and seconded by Commissioner Mulrooney. All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. On the business agenda, first item is item 3A. It's a caucus, so there will be no vote. A minor subdivision plan for 518 Asken Road. Subdivision of a vacant single lot into two lots, each with a planned residential dwelling. Uh-huh.
Evening. This is on Asken Road, which is around the corner. I'm sorry. You good? This is on Asken Road, which is around the corner. It's an existing private road. Currently, what is being subdivided is a property that's approximately 63,000 square feet. It's R3 zoning, which requires 10,000 square foot minimums. We're proposing lot sizes of 32,498 and 31,975, as you can see on this plan. As I mentioned, the R3 requirement is 10,000 square feet. Plan's been approved by the planning commission. Mr. Lingo's met numerous times with the neighbors. He has agreed to mill, repave, and widen the road by four feet, at least in his area, as far as widening, but he will mill and repave the entire road. He has also scoped certain blockages that occur on the street, and they have been cleared. I know there's a main blockage that's being caused by agua. I think that the applicant's working with Mr. Norsini on trying to resolve that issue. As to the review and waiver letters, there's a couple waivers being requested. One waiver is the, is the areas culvers, things of that nature, under 22B1K of the code that requires that existing principal buildings, sewer lines, storm drains, culvers, bridges, et cetera, be shown within 500 feet. We have in place of that an aerial showing the buildings, the streets, and improvements in this area. The other request for the waiver, currently, there are no sidewalks on Asken Road. Discussions with neighbors is, there's no desire to put sidewalks on. There's currently cobblestone curbing. The request is to install the curb, that it be cobblestone. I believe the township is required, still require granite, Steve, so.
That's one of the options, yes.
Okay. And the other request for a waiver actually is not part of the SALDO, but is part of water infiltration. It doesn't meet it on one of the lots slightly. And what is being proposed are rain gardens, as well as an underground detention system to resolve that issue. As to the review letters, as I mentioned, currently, this is an existing private street. It has currently 10 lots on it, including this vacant lot. So, what is being proposed here is to increase the number of lots from 10 to 11. As I mentioned, these lots are fairly substantial as far as size and probably larger, or just as large as the largest lots on this property. On the other thing, on the plan, I know we don't have site distances. We comply, but we'll provide that on the recorded plan and confirm that there are adequate site distances. That was one of the comments in the Gilmore letter. And as I mentioned, the applicant has discussed road improvements and they're willing to regrade, mill, repave, and grant the township an additional five feet, four feet of cartway on his property.
Thank you. Commissioner questions? I have a couple. So, when you talk about widening just on your property, what happens to the road closer to the, you know, to a public road? I mean, wouldn't it just be wider there? And I mean, we had the same question with the other.
Patrick Spellman, Site Engineering Concepts. So, being a private road, the only place that we really can widen is in front of the two lots that we are talking about. It happens to be the narrowest part of the street on the bend, but that's the portion that would be widened. The rest of the street would not. I missed the second part of your question.
No, that was really it. I was just like concerned whether it would just be you'd come down the road and then suddenly it's wider for a while and suddenly it's narrow again. But I didn't realize it was the narrowest part of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, we have 10 homes. If you count these as two homes on this private road, is that correct?
You would have 11.
11, then.
Yeah. And fronting, actually, there's only eight driveways on the road, but if you're counting homes at front or lots at front, because the requirement is lots at front, there are currently 10 lots at front. We're creating one additional lot. So, there'll be 11 lots at front, and of those lots, nine of them will have driveways on Asken.
Thank you. That was helpful.
How many houses, you're saying lots, but how many houses are there?
Two. Oh, you mean there now?
Currently.
Currently, there are nine because there's not a house on this property. Correct, Patrick?
Correct. So, this property is a vacant lot currently and seeking to subdivide it and build two houses on what's currently just one lot?
One lot, correct.
Other questions?
Sorry, quick little question. The, from Brookside, I know you can go in that way. Like in the drawing, it shows like you could, not, it shows like lines go into Ivan, but you're going through like somebody's driveway, all the way at the end, and it curves kind of back down, yeah, that spot.
So, these are. Excuse me. So, yeah, we'd be looking at the private right-of-way that goes to the, to the end of the street. It doesn't really match up with the aerial, but that's just an issue with the aerials? If that's what you're asking?
Yeah, so it's just a private right-of-way.
Yeah, it is private right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
And who, just to that property owner or to everyone on the street?
Everyone on.
It's just, it's just that property owner at the end that owns that.
Got it. There are a lot of those in Radnor Township.
Yeah.
Other questions? Comments?
Where does Asken let out?
So, it's a dead-end road. It comes in off of Brookside, and then it ends at the two driveways at the end.
Got it.
The only, the only entrance and egress is through Brookside.
Yep. And you did speak with neighbors, it sounds like. Do they have any interest in this becoming not a private road?
They do. In working with staff, it didn't seem as though that was something that Radnor Township wanted. So, so that we could, you know, right now, they're kind of passing the hat around whenever there's a pothole that needs to be fixed or whatever. Now, Radnor does plow and pick trash up on the road. But we thought just so that we had a little bit more of an enduring, lasting road, that we would do this regrading, milling, and repaving of it.
Mr. Norsini, could I just ask you a generic question? What about a private road like this, would, why would the township not want to take it on?
So, we met with.
I mean, that's a sort of a.
No, but we met with several residents from there several years ago. I think nobody on the board, nobody currently on the board was on the board. And the impetus for them to turn it back to the township was to get the street paved, right? It's in really bad shape, and that was really the impetus. And so, where you show, at the end of that street, aside from totally, you know, erratic widths, no curbs, at the end of that street, it's really just like a driveway. It's, it just serves two homes. So, and John Rice was involved and myself. So, if somebody wanted to turn back a road, we would require them to meet minimum standards because we're going to get, want to get liquid fuels for that road. And I would be hard-pressed to come to the board and say, "I think it's a great idea to take this road back, but by the way, next year, we need to spend 40, 50, 60, 70,000 dollars to bring it up to snuff." So, usually, when this occurs, we ask the folks, "If you want to turn it back to the township, bring it up to the minimum standards." And that's where it usually falls apart. And like I said, the big impetus was getting resurfaced, and that was probably eight or 10 years ago. So, I know it, I'm sure they're happy to see that happening now.
Got it. Are there differences in widths and sightlines as well? Like, would they need to actually widen the road?
They would. So, Mr. Lingo, as he noted, is going to be doing it in front of his two lots, and that is one of the narrowest areas. But the, the end is truly a dead end. It really narrows down to about driveway width at that end. So, there'd be considerable work.
Thank you. That's really helpful for me to kind of settle it in my mind a little bit as a private road, about it.
So it's not a cul-de-sac. Is there a turnaround? How do you, how do you get out?
If you were to drive to the end of the road, it requires many key turns in order to get out. It's not a cul-de-sac.
Is there currently room for a car? I mean, I understand, I know these routes, and I know that it, you know, kind of bleeds into two driveways. But if you're not going to those two houses, is there a place to turn around at the end?
There is not.
There's not?
No.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you again. Moving on to item three B, discussion and consideration of a preliminary land development plan for eight hundred Lancaster Avenue, Villanova University, Connolly Center. Expansion of the current student center. Mr. Canelia.
Thank you. Nick Canelia representing the applicant on this matter. We've been here previously. This past week, we received comments from the township's consultant regarding the parking requirements, the buildings, and things of that nature. So we would like additional time to review that and respond to that, and perhaps meet with township staff. There's issues regarding the square footage of the buildings. Remember, these buildings, some of them, many of them are dating back nineteen fifties, nineteen forties, nineteen sixties. There's a number of issues involved here, and we're just trying to clarify the issues and get all the facts for both us and for the township. And so we would request that the board table this matter. I have provided the township with an extension until October thirty-first of this year.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. We'll see you in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is item three C, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. It's an introduction, amending the Radnor Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter two seven zero, Vehicles and Traffic, by adding a new Article nine, Electric Bicycle and Electric Scooter Regulations. Mr. Nelson, you want to start us off on this one?
Yes. I believe my office was requested to prepare this ordinance that we've put together. Many of the definitions and requirements are actually based on state law. So the definitions in regards to what constitutes a Class one and Class two electric bicycles conform with state law. And, and the requirements regarding e-scooters also conform with state law. It's state law that they are not, e-scooters are not allowed anywhere on public highways or sidewalks. So I believe, you know, I think over the last couple of years, all municipalities have just seen an explosion of these vehicles on our roadways, our sidewalks, our bike paths. And municipalities are starting to just get a handle on them. There's a lot of municipalities, I've ridden on bike paths, where I now see signage regarding what type of these e-bikes can use these bike paths, as far as size and speed. And I think this ordinance is just the first step for Radnor, and it is just a draft to, you know, see what we can do in regards to ensuring that these vehicles are used appropriately and are used in such a way that they do not threaten, you know, other users of these sorts of paths.
Thank you. Well said. Safety first. Chief Flanagan, do you have anything to add at this point? I don't want to blindside you. I just thought you might have a comment or two.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll step in for the chief, just to get the conversations, keep this conversation going. I think, you know, piggybacking off of Solicitor Nelson's summary, we just want to make sure that the, the ordinance, as it's drafted tonight, is consistent with the, the objectives of the board. And I'm, a lot of times, we work on these things in the background during the day, and then they, they come to the, you know, this meeting, and it hasn't really been fully discussed yet. So I just want to make sure, or at least hear from the board on exactly what we're trying to accomplish. There are a couple of issues to, that we'd like to vet out, specifically when it comes to enforcement and what that might look like. We've got issues where a lot of these bikes, as, as Mr. Nelson already pointed out, a lot of these already exist in households. So this ordinance will be coming in after the fact, and, you know, just have a discussion on what that may look like. And then also, exactly what it is we're asking the police to, to do in terms of enforcing this going forward. So the first thing in that whole setup was making sure that we're meeting the board's objectives with the draft that's in front of you here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, if, if we're open for questions, I do have, so I like this, thank you. I know that we've all been hearing from community members and perhaps encountering this issue ourselves. There's one, just one line in this that says electric scooters, and I know it's different than the bicycles. Electric scooters are only permitted on private property. So my recent, I will say run-in, but I didn't hit anybody. My recent encounter was a kid in a, you know, an HOA-controlled neighborhood that was off of the main roads. I made an assumption that he probably lived there, and he was on an electric scooter. No helmet. I would have loved to see the, the young man with a helmet. But the idea that you can only have it on private property, I think, is a little limiting. We have a lot of these neighborhoods that have, you know, very little traffic. And if we can perhaps ensure some safety measures, like helmets, maybe there's a way to refine that to allow some play, right? That's where kids play when they live in a neighborhood, is a pub, is, you know, is a public road. So I just opened that up to see how strict, how strict we want to be.
Where does mirror, mirroring state law? Pennsylvania prohibits the use of scooters on all public streets and sidewalks. That's, yeah, that's, that's why the ordinance says that, it's just, that's what the state requires.
So then, I guess my, I question why we have, why we are passing an ordinance to mirror what is already covered in state law? And can't we just turn to talk about enforcement?
Well, first off, you know, we, we need an ordinance to regulate what's happening on our private property, i.e. our trails, our parks, that sort of thing. So this ordinance would address those issues there. I also think it's, by adopting our old, sorry, our own ordinance, it gives us a little more control over the enforcement of that. And certainly, the police have some worries about enforcement in this area, especially when dealing with minors who are using these vehicles. So adopting our old, our own ordinance will allow us to address some of the police concerns also.
Okay, I hear you. My other issue and question was that every device regulated under this article must be equipped with a speedometer. I don't think scooters have speedometers typically, you know, the electric scooters. Where are you going to put it? They're tiny little handlebars and.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
So I feel like.
I, I know Superintendent Flanagan raised that as one of his issues. And that's, you know, something that we're going to have to look at. It also raises a problem where, you know, as Mr. White stated, we already have hundreds and not thousands of these in the township. And if many of these don't have speedometers, we're kind of making them illegal by fiat, and that might not be the best of things. So that's certainly something we, we need to look at.
So I understand the issue that we're facing. I understand that there are a lot more of these that have come around in recent years as companies have kind of been, you know, building out this, this product. But, you know, it is, it is a toy, you know? I mean, I know people are, I, I think we can restrict sort of some usage of it, but we're taking, we're taking away a kid's, you know, ability to play in their street on a, on a scooter. Whether it's electric or not, they don't go that fast. You know, like I said, I love the idea of a helmet. I love keeping them off the trails. I now understand there's sort of some state laws that maybe we're not enforcing. But I, I do caution that, you know, this is supposed to be fun. It's just, you know, how do we, how do we allow young people to have a good time and instill some safety measures that are required? So perhaps it's helmets and a, you know, some PSA, and, you know, letting people know the dangers and that sort of thing. You know, put up signs to say they can't be on the trails. But I, I feel like this is like not letting, I, I live in, I live on a very short block, you know, ended with two busy streets, and we have a pocket park. And, you know, if those kids want to whip a scooter up and down our street to get to the park, it would seem really draconian if we wouldn't allow that.
Commissioner Mulrooney, can I just make a comment? Because I, I disagree pretty significantly. I think these scooters do go really fast, and they're really dangerous, and you can't see them. They're akin to a little kid in one of those little electric cars that, you know, is supposed to stay in their driveway. I mean, well, you might see a head, but you can't see any vehicle. They're really difficult to see, and I, I think that they shouldn't be on public roads. I really feel strongly about it. I don't think a helmet's going to help you when you're going twenty miles an hour on a scooter, frankly. I mean, I think you'll be better off. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against the helmet. But I don't think it's an adequate safety thing on a, on a public road. I know they've been banned a lot of places, including New York City, because people whip down the sidewalks on them. And, you know, they're really pretty dangerous. So I, I just think that, I don't know how you define an HOA, and is that a private area, that sort of thing. But I still, I would be against them being allowed. They can have a regular scooter. That's what kids are for, to use leg power.
I, I'll just comment and say, you know, I agree with Commissioner Mulrooney. I think this is a gross overreach, personally. Not to mention the way it's written, is you're trying to regulate something on somebody's private property, so there's some contradictions in it the way it is anyway. But at the end of the day, I mean, these are, these are, we want people on electric mobility devices. Yes, we want them to be safe, and yes, we want them in helmets, and yes, we want to make sure we can see them. I think there's a lot of things we can do to make that better. But I live in a neighborhood where there's a lot of kids on scooters scooting around the neighborhood, right? And, and electric bikes and things like that. I, I think they're really great for the, for the kids. I think they're really great for people to not use their car. There's a lot of adults that take electric bikes and scooters up and down the neighborhood to get, you know, to and from the store. I think, I think that the intent to be safe and to make sure people are not speeding down trails is right, but I think what we've gone here is a little too far. This is a blanket ban on scooters. That's what it is. Like, and you just said it, you just said it, you can't have an electric scooter, you can have a regular one. That seems like a really weird thing to say.
So, so my intent was to prohibit the use of electric scooters and e-bikes for children under the age of sixteen. I, so is, is this draft prohibiting all e-scooters, or is it just for usage?
Well, this is all scooters on public anything, so it wouldn't matter how old you are.
Yeah, and I mean, look, we let sixteen-year-olds drive.
Vehicles.
Full cars.
So I'm saying.
But I don't think, this isn't a full car. I mean, a fourteen-year-old can't have an electric scooter. I, I think we're overreaching.
Going as fast as.
Well, then let's put speed limits on it.
We didn't class the scooters, you classed the e-bikes. And the scooters have, I mean, my kids have had some that go two miles an hour, and they have some that go twenty miles an hour. I mean, it's, they're all diff, you buy them at different sizes and speeds. So what we've said is that there's no electric scooter usage in Radnor Township. That's what we said, unless you're doing it on your driveway. If you live in my neighborhood, there are no driveways, right? They can go up and down the little walkway from my door to the street before, you know, Chief Flanagan shows up to write them a ticket for being on a scooter. Right? That, that's crazy.
But, but this draft is consistent with state law, then?
Then enforce the state law. We don't need our own ordinance.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I mean, if there's.
Not to mention, do we want our police walking around writing two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar tickets for scooter usage around Radnor Township? That seems ridiculous.
Does state law ban electric veh, scooters and bikes for people under sixteen?
Yes, so.
Totally prohibited from using an electric scooter if I'm fifteen years old.
Yeah, yes, but that's on public roads. Not, once again, not, not on private property. But if you're going to operate it on a public road, public right-of-way, PennDOT says it's prohibited, it's not allowed.
And I'm, I mean, for the record, I'm not, I'm not interested in fines or citations. I mean, if the, if the police see a child out there and believe that individual's under the age of sixteen, I'd be happy, completely satisfied if they were just to help the child get back to their house. I'm not looking to.
But what if I'm riding a scooter down the street? I'm not a kid. You know what I mean? Like, you can see me.
Again, again, my intent, my intent was.
Like, why can't I take an electric vehicle to my, to Villanova to see a game? Would you rather me drive my, my truck down the street? Like, you want me to spend two grand on an electric bike instead of two hundred on a scooter, right? Like, at the end of the day, you're, I mean, there's equity issues here. There's all sorts of problems with the way this is written.
Well, right now, it's illegal on this, based on the state. So I, I'm all with you. We don't need our own ordinance to say that. But if it's illegal, there's nothing. You, you know, you can go and, and we can, you could try to fight that, but.
Well, if the chief wants to arrest me on my, for riding my scooter down the street to, to Nova, I'll let him. And, and I'm happy to argue that in court. But I don't think we need our own ordinance to, you know, to codify this in any way. I think there's sixteen-year-olds on e-bikes. I think I'm totally good with if you, if you want to put that on paper. But at the end of the day, I mean, that's, these, this is not nearly an issue that needed to be solved, in my opinion. If you want to talk about the trails and parks, I think we should definitely talk about where they're used. But I don't think putting a blanket ban on our township makes a lot of sense for any, for anything like this.
Yeah, so however, just passed the helmet requirement for sixteen, you know, for under sixteen. For e-bikes and scooters. They defined the e-bicycle and e-scooter a little bit differently than we did, but I think it ends up the same. But I, I mean, I, I'm all about the safety aspect of it as far as making sure that people have enough equipment to keep them safe. I, you know, perhaps we could look at putting a speed limit on it? You can't take a scooter over ten miles an hour?
I mean, do we have a rampant, like, population of people running around in scooters that we need to, like, regulate this? I mean, is this, has this been a police issue before? Are there accidents that we're aware of? Do we have situations that we're actually solving for? Or is this because we feel like there could be a problem? Are we being too proactive here?
So I see someone on a scooter probably once a day. And I haven't really waited on this so far. But what I will say is that a friend recently was struck on a motorcycle and killed after three days of operations. So I don't view this as a concern that I'm going to hit a kid and my car is going to be damaged, or I'm going to be sad. I see it as a concern that I'm going to hit a kid, and the kid is going to be dead. There is, I think, an assumption that if you're able to go to Target and buy an electric scooter and then zip around in the township, that that's safe, because I can go to the store and I can buy it. If I buy a car at a dealership, my expectation is that the car is going to be safe for its intended purpose. If I buy a bike at REI or Target, my assumption is that the bike is going to be safe for its intended purpose. And similarly, if I'm a parent and I'm buying an electric scooter for my kid, or if I'm a kid and I'm buying an electric scooter for myself, I think that it's plausible to believe that the scooter is going to be safe for its intended purpose, which is zipping around the township and doing exactly what you're describing, getting to a Villanova game from your house. I see people and children going downtown, to downtown Wayne, from North Wayne. I see adults getting to the train station on their scooters. And I think that they all imagine that it's a safe, safe mode of transportation. And the people sitting on this dais were not aware that they're not allowed to be doing what they're doing. We're just finding out now for the first time. We're just finding out now for the first time that's a violation of state law and I assume the vehicle code to be driving on a scooter. To, to say that you've got a kid who's six, seven, eight, nine years old doing the same thing, they're going to get hit by cars. And I think that the obligation that the township has here is to educate people that you are going to, this is not an intended purpose. This is not something for which the scooter is intended. Now, separate from that, we can say that we don't want you on the Radnor Trail. I'm not terribly concerned that the kid is going to get run over on the Radnor Trail because there aren't cars on the Radnor Trail. It's just kind of a nuisance to everybody else. And it's a legitimate conversation. Do we want to say no scooters on the Radnor Trail? But I've got no problem leading from the front on kids and frankly, anybody on a scooter with no airbags and no seat belts um, on the streets in Radnor Township and telling them we're going to have our own ordinance. It's in addition to, and we're going to educate the public about it. No, no one's going to arrest a child and throw them in irons in the back of a police car or something. Police officer is going to take the scooter and say, this will be at your house waiting for you when you get home and I'd be happy to drive you there, the same way our great police always do when they have issues with kids. But yeah, I'm strongly in support of anything that takes stupid vehicles like scooters off the road. And I say stupid because if you get hit by a car in one, you're just going to go flying.
Jack, do your, do your kids ride bikes?
Uh, my kids ride bikes, but not on the public roads.
Well, my kids have to ride their bikes on the public roads. There are no other roads for my kids to ride their bikes, right? So at the end of the day, a kid, there has to be some sort of accountability on parents to educate their own children about the safety of things, to be with them when they're using them. Right? Like, I mean, I have a 13-year-old, so it's a little different. He doesn't want me to be around him anytime he's doing anything. But at the end of the day, like, I appreciate what you're saying because I don't want, nobody wants kids to get hurt or nobody wants kids to get hit by cars. There has to be some, some parenting involved too. But it's not the, the, putting a ridiculous
Of course. I mean, you say, of course, like, that's the thing that we're all born knowing that you're supposed to use car seats.
What I'm saying is, you're saying, okay, well, a bicycle is safe, but a scooter is not safe.
I'm not saying a bicycle is safe.
I mean, is, is, there's a lot, I mean, like
My kids don't ride bicycles on public roads.
Do we need an ordinance for every toy a kid can buy at Target?
Uh, no.
Should we make sure that parents that buy things that are small, watch their children and don't swallow them? Right? I mean, like, what, how many ordinances do we need?
I think that if you're going to drive a vehicle on the public roads, which are a regulated space, it's fairly understood that you're going to have higher regulation. There are a million different cases that say that. And the reason that you have car seats for your little kids is because somebody told you as a government agency, this is unsafe and you need to do this. And the reason was not because you were going to get ticketed if you didn't do it. It's because you love your children and you want them to be safe. But you needed the education at some point in order to be told that this is how you do it safely.
I think education is a great starting point, not an ordinance.
The ordinance does not provide any additional protection.
I think education is great. I think PSAs are great. I think all of these things are great. I think there's limited regulation to put in, but I think this is a blanket ban. I think it's ridiculous.
Okay, well, I have spent enough time sounding like the cartoon character from The Simpsons. I will say the words so that somebody can do a TikTok of me. Won't someone please think of the children? But, uh, yeah, I just, I fundamentally disagree.
Uh, I, I, excuse me. I, I think I am seeing more of them compared to, say, three years ago. And there's certainly, um, different ones too. I've seen unicycle ones that go extremely fast. Um, other ones that were kind of older ones with, they had one tire, but they'd have a foot in front and back and they would ride it through the giant. That was a couple of years ago. But these other ones are on the side and they go really fast. Um, and then I've seen kids using them when it's dark out and it's hard to see them using them when it's dark out. And I don't even know that they're there. I can hear like the buzzing, that's about it. But there's certainly more now than there used to be. And if we can make it safer somehow, that would be great. Thanks.
So the personal mobility devices are not addressed in here? So like segways or unicycles or, um, anything like that? So we should probably note those if we're going to have all of these classes. Secondly, there's also electric skateboards people ride. So handheld motorized, uh, longboards, things like that. It should probably be addressed as a class in here, um, and regulated. I think you, if you're going to have an ordinance, make it about everything. Um, if we're going to ban stuff, let's ban it all, right? So like, at the end of the day, it, I feel like we got to be a little more, uh, specific here. This feels like, um, the right intent with the wrong execution.
I think the reason the e-scooters and the e-bikes, um, are here specifically is because a Segway just doesn't go that fast. Um, these guys will go a good 20, 25 miles an hour and they're getting better and better. Um, well, I've never seen one go that fast. May I only see the ones that are touring around the town? Yeah, I've never been on one, so I don't know. Um, I just really think that, especially when you're talking about a young child on an electric scooter, they're not very tall. You really, wouldn't even see them go by a car, um, that it's an incredibly dangerous scenario for a minor. Um, that's just my
Pete, Peter, just one, one exception to this. Um, uh, for, for neighbors who have like a medical waiver and it's the, you know, they, they have, they have a hard time walking and they don't drive. Is there a way that they could have a waiver to be able to use?
Uh, uh, the, none of these regulations apply to mobility assist devices. Such as, you know, the, the four-wheel or three-wheel scooters. I don't think, you, you don't see a lot of people using the e-bikes or the, this, you know, the two-wheel scooters as mobility assist devices. But the state law specifically excludes, you know, like my father used one to get around, powered wheelchair or something to that effect.
But, but, but say they do use an e-bike, um, for, for medical reasons to get, to get around a younger, a younger neighbor, um, would they be able to have a medical waiver to, to still use that as assistance?
Um, I mean, we could write it into, into the ordinance. Um, it wouldn't impact state law, but it's certainly something we could write into the ordinance if we want to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I realized I never got a motion on this. Um, Ordinance 2025 dash 08, could I have a motion, please? So moved by Commissioner O'Reilly in a second. Second by somebody down there. Um, thank you, sorry, that was my, my, um, luck. Well, I do think, um, it is worth noting that we are not talking about, uh, scooters and bicycles, but only electric, um, scooters and electric bicycles, um, which is a different thing. And, and, um, is a concern of mine.
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue. I'd like you to look at the other side of this. And that's the person who's walking down the sidewalk. Who, if it's an e-whatever, you do not hear it coming. And they can be older than 16. I had a personal experience standing at the corner of Airdale and Lancaster, waiting to cross the light. Fortunately, I stood back from the sidewalk and the guy went right by my nose had I been standing on the sidewalk. I don't think he would have seen me and he could have killed me. And I'm not the only person who has nearly been run down by a kid or someone older on an e-scooter or an e-bike. So I think that you need to protect the public. They are sort of a scourge. Thank you.
Yeah, Director Cohen actually has already seen several episodes of, uh, e-bikes and e-scooters hitting folks, so, yes.
Hey, good evening. I didn't come here for this, but, uh, I am a father of four. I'll tell you a quick story. About 40 years ago, I was on a skateboard on Larry's Lane, grabbed onto the back of a car, straight up about 60 miles per hour and I fell off in front of my house. My dad saw it. I never saw the skateboard again. So I don't think an ordinance will really do anything because there's already, already a state law saying don't use it. I think you need to let the parents know the problems with it and that will cure itself. Thanks.
Thank you for your input.
Wear helmets too.
Yeah.
Or buy gas-powered, the electric.
Who asked you? Mr. Gemmer.
Hi, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. Uh, addressing one of the reasons that Peter was talking about the ordinance, which is for the, the township property, the trails, et cetera. There are a ton more, not even the past three years, past one year, on the trail. All different classes, the Class 1, the Class 2, the electric skateboards, you see those. So yes, that should be added. And while the conversation was talking about, you know, hitting a child with a car and maybe killing them, on the trail, you probably won't have vitality, but you're going to have some really serious injuries. They do come up behind you with no notice, no noise. And some of them are kids that don't know any better. Um, so unlike the situation where the, the gentleman ducked his skateboard taken away, this is talking about injuring other folks because you've got the bikes and the walkers and the runners on there. And they're, again, all different classes, this zip and buy with no notice. And the trail does get, you know, people crossing both directions, it gets crowded and some of the kids don't know to slow down. So it's not a matter of just them learning their lesson. It's a matter of them not hurting somebody in learning their lesson. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I think what I'm hearing is that at minimum, we need some redrafting of this ordinance. Um, and, um,
I, I also believe the staff feels that too.
Okay, um, anybody want to comment?
Commissioners, I want to thank you for taking this so seriously. And I know a couple of commissioners, like Commissioner Abel, have constantly been in contact uh, in reference to this particular issue. Um, I think there's a lot of wisdom in evaluating this and I would love for you guys to entrust us to redraft this and try and form it a little better. My in-depth research, we had a whole team meeting, which Mr. White joined us on today, just revisiting this issue. There's a couple of pieces to this. And one of them is, most importantly, how do we, how do we feel about our community? And I see some impassioned commissioners bringing up some really critical points from safety to quality of life, all, all critical. Um, I would love to build this up from helmet to operations and let the state law stand for itself is potentially the direction I'd ask you to consider. And then in the, where we'd like to spend a little bit of time is if we do have an interaction with somebody or a family that doesn't want to observe safety or creates a problem. Um, I think we retool some of the penalty part. We have some systems in place. For example, our very exciting youth aid panel. That could be a step from a warning to a youth aid panel meeting to then maybe a fine that's run through our internal system so you don't have to be part of the judicial system as long as permitted by law, I believe it is. So there's a couple of things that we could do maybe to, to soften this, but to have the impact that the commissioners want as a safer environment for kids, which I don't think anybody would argue. Um, uh, one of our biggest concerns is the operation of any scooter, whether above the age of 18 or below the age of 18, in the dark. When you look at the, breaking down the law, one of the biggest things they talk about is the regulation that there's mirrors, reflectors, turn signals and lights. I think that is one of the things that's missed. Also in the vehicle code, we talk about CCs and now this whole exciting world of electric motors is done by watts. And I'm certainly no product expert. But we, those definitions are important, they're very important. And some of these motorized units go way too fast even for a sidewalk. So it'd be great to break that down just a little bit more and build from the helmet up as a start and also talk about our penalty process so that it would be a, more of a learning experience for the family and the child so that hopefully a year from now, they'd always have their helmet on and we'd never be worrying about it. And then, I don't want to speak for the law because it's not formally presented to the state yet, but the spirit of Senator Kearney's law was multiple occupants on a scooter. They are not designed for that. And that is one of the biggest issues. There was a fatality in Aston and also a near double fatality in Springfield. So that's just our, our little county and I like to take that into consideration. It does have a lot to do with how many kids can you do it? We all know what kids are. I was riding bikes with two to three people on them. So those banana seats, if you remember those, if you're old enough. So those type of things to follow up, redraft, come before you with a, just a better product and then acknowledge the state law that, hey, if, if you cause a problem or you run out in an intersection, you will face penalties. And I can't remember which commissioner brought up about the, um, PSAs, but I think really hitting our town with public safety awareness, getting the word out, uh, visiting some of the home associations, a lot of things where scooters, e-scooters are big and e-bikes. And e-bikes are an issue. They are so fast and so capable, it's kind of mind-boggling and we want to just sort of make sure we're tracking that development as well. So that, that would be my request to the board and, and again, acknowledging you're want, you're wanting to make this township safer.
Chief, I really appreciate that, thank you. Um, and I appreciate all the thoughtful points that everybody has brought up. Um, I think I'm going to now make a motion to table this, um, and, uh, get a little rework on it. Um, second, um, okay. And seconded by Commissioner Mulrooney. Thank you. All in favor of tabling? Aye, it's unanimous. Good discussion though. All right. Item 3D, Ordinance 2025 dash 09. It's an, also an introduction. Amending Section 263 dash 8 of Chapter 263 of the Radnor Township Code. Trees, to clarify when a clearing permit is required, establishes additional requirements for tree removal and sets an effective date. Um, Mr. Foster or Mr. Gibbons, who wants to start on this one?
I will introduce, uh, Mr. Gibbons.
Wonderful.
He will do the talking. Um, but just to give a little background information, as, as you mentioned, um, this was something that was vetted by the Shade Tree Commission. They reviewed it, uh, several times, several meetings, and they came to an agreement in regards to the language. Uh, we then reviewed it with, uh, the township manager who approved it and then sent it to Solicitor Rice, um, to make sure that the language was drafted correctly. So now we have Mr. Gibbons and he can explain why that, uh, change was needed.
Thanks Ricky. Um, yeah, so we had a, uh, resident that bought a house. They had nine or so trees that were all dead or dying. They were, they had to come down the trees, everybody knew it. They were inherited trees. Um, they had to get a clearing permit, which costs $250, there's a fee to it, and go to a shade tree meeting as per the ordinance because it's over the six trees. Um, I didn't, we didn't think that was fair. Uh, so we changed the language to say, any, if the trees are dead or dying, that is not needed, the clearing permit, they can just go do the hazard tree report, get it approved by John, just like any other tree that's dead. And it saves the resident $250 and a month waiting, uh, to come to a shade tree meeting. Pretty much it.
Thank you.
Yep.
For that concise summary, it was actually good. Um, all right. Um, could I have a motion to approve Ordinance 2025 dash 09? So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney in a second.
This is a, Madam President, is an introduction, I believe. So just a motion to authorize advertisement?
Oh, we usually do it as a
Here, yeah, so we do it a little differently?
Yeah, no, no, that's all right. We usually do a, a motion in a second, even on an introduction and then we'll bring it back. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood what you were doing then. Okay, thank you.
Um, all right. Um, Commissioner, questions, comments? Anything for Mr. Gibbons?
I guess I'm, I'm looking at this now, but, um, what does a resident have to show to prove that the trees are dead?
Hazard tree report.
They have to, so they are going, they're getting a report, which will call them something.
So if you're taking down a heritage tree, 30 inches or greater, um, you have to fill out a hazard tree report to show that it's dead. It's sent to Rick or the township or Trish maybe. Then it goes to John, hospback. He reviews the tree within a couple of days, gives you the go-ahead. So this would be the same process.
Okay.
So he would check it to make sure that, not trying to get around the process.
Yeah, I read it, I read it as just providing the descrip, like
On a hazard tree report. So I assume John would take a look at something like this.
There's a verification that these are damaged trees.
Yeah, the hazardous tree report, um, goes to Public Works and then we send it to John to verify everything. We ask for pictures, um, so that John's able to do a site visit and also see it from the pictures. And the one thing we talked about with the Shade Tree Commission also, um, the hazardous tree report, um, we were thinking about changing it to say hazardous, hazardous or dead tree. Because right now it only says, you know, one topic. So we would be able to cover both and whoever the person is that's using it will be able to be descriptive as to what we're looking at and what we're looking for.
And there's no charge to the hazardous tree report itself?
It is not.
Great. Other questions, comments? All right. Um, seeing none, I'm going to call a vote. Oh, any public participation, I'm sorry. Seeing none, call a vote on Ordinance 2025 dash 09. All in favor? All in favor? Aye. So it'll get advertised and come back. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And stay away from those cars when you're on your skateboard. Item 3E, Resolution 2025-133, Authorization to Award the Contract for the Roof Replacement and Photovoltaic Solar Installation Project at the Radnor Township Municipal Building and Public Works Complex, Contract B-25-007, to Designs Construction Incorporated and Terra Sol Energies Incorporated, to Include Contingency and Construction Inspection and Administration Costs in the Total Amount of $3,351,126, to be Funded from the Proceeds of the 2024 Facilities General Obligation Bond. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. We are very happy to finally award this project. You may remember, we had to reject the bids and rebid it. So we have now the lowest qualified bidders. Very excited to get started. So one of the items, one of the reasons we had to reject the bids the last time, we didn't get a lot of bids. We had one on one and zero on another, was because, due to the timeline, because there are long lead items on this. So we offered to extend the time, if necessary, if they can prove that it is a long lead item, not to give them money, but to give them time. So with this award, we can then now meet with these contractors, start to create a schedule, and move forward from there. So we're very excited for these projects.
As are we. I think it's a great thing. Great. Any questions or comments? Any public participation on this? I need to call a motion to approve Resolution 2025-133.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney in a second. Second by Commissioner O'Reilly. All right. We've heard comments and public, no public participation. I'm gonna call a vote on Resolution 2025-133. All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Next is Resolution 3, or no, Item 3F, Resolution 2025-135, Authorization of the Payment of the Change Order for a New Pad-Mounted Controller, Installation of a New Conduit, and Repair of Broken Conduits, and a Credit for Auxiliary Cabinets and Network Switch to Lenny Electric Corporation for the Lancaster Avenue East Traffic Adaptive System Installation, Contract B-25-004B, in the Total Net Amount of $77,678.55 to be Paid from the Proceeds of the 2019 General Obligation Bond, and a Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Grant. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So as you know, this project was just recently awarded. The design, through the grant, the design was done by Baker, who was chosen and provided by PennDOT. And once that design was done and the contract was awarded, Lenny Electric went literally intersection by intersection to go through things. So one of the things they found out was that, yes, at Lancaster and Airedale, they don't feel that there is room in the existing panel box to do the work. There's other intersections where, as they tried to fish wire through the conduit, they could not, meaning it's broken, we're gonna have to dig up the road and do that. And we have unit prices for them. There are some credits. So when you, obviously, the biggest single cost is that controller. And then when you add in the areas where we have to dig up conduits, they are the adds. And then we also did have some credits, which was nice. So there were some intersections where they found they didn't need to implement everything that was provided for in the design. So we get the credit for that. And then what, so what you see before you now is the net change order for the project at the start.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-135? So moved by Commissioner O'Reilly in a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Coats. All right. Any questions for Mr. Norsini? Or no? Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none. I'm gonna call a vote on Resolution 2025-135. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Last item on the business agenda is 3G, Resolution 2025-136, Authorization to Award the Contract to Install the Second Round of Water Source Heat Pumps and the Four Mini-Split Ductless Air Conditioning Units in the Township Building to J.J. White Incorporated, to Include Contingency Costs in the Total Amount of $212,300, to be Funded from the Proceeds of the 2024 Facilities General Obligation Bond. Mr. Norsini again?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So this is really two parts. The replacement's round two. The board approved previously the systematic replacement of the pumps in the building, right? And this is, we did X before, and we're gonna continue doing that. And then we'll be before you again at some other point in time. These are all CoStarz contracts, which are no-bid contracts. So we're able to do that through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing. For the other, for the other four, really, the main impetus was the sergeant's office. So picture our command crew in this office, wearing their vests and their uniforms and all their things. And it was unbelievably hot in the summer. It was not controlled well in the winter. So it is not unusual. I mean, I've dealt with HVAC for some time, and in working with Bob Hale. We had no real answer to do this through our existing HVAC system for this room. So I thought going with the split unit, I mean, people have them in their houses, these are similar, would be a help to our officers that are, or to our sergeants that are in there. And then as we looked and speaking with Bob, there were other rooms that underwent the same drastic temperature swings that made it very uncomfortable for our police force to work, and our detectives. You know, curling paper in the summer, freezing in the winter. So that's what that is. There's the Highway Patrol, which is right next door to the sergeants, the detectives, which is down the hall. And the last is actually the server room. So as you can figure, servers generate a considerable amount of heat. And when this building was designed, you know, pre-2008, so probably 2006, they had no idea the amount of equipment we would have. And I've seen this also in past lives where this occurred. So even though some of our things, even though some, Mr. Hale has reduced, you know, the servers, and they're more efficient, they're still there. And this is a way to keep them cool and let Bob Hale sleep at night, because I think that he struggles with that, with the temperature swings.
Thank you. All right. I am going to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-136. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mulrooney. Any questions or comments for Mr. Norsini? Or anyone? Seeing none. Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none. I'll call a vote on Resolution 2025-136. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. So that comes to the end of our business agenda. Next item is reports of board liaisons. Anybody have anything to report? No? No, the only thought is I thought I might bring the e-scooter, e-bike issue to the Board of Health, just to see if they have any interesting input there.
That would be great.
Any new business? Any old business?
Madam President, just real quick on old business, if, if folks don't recognize the gentleman sitting down toward the end here, Chief Smith. Happy to have him aboard. If you weren't here at the last meeting, and the same four people were here, so they are aware. But anyone watching at home, who may not have been at the last meeting to see the appointment, we invited Mr. Smith to join us tonight, even though we didn't have an agenda item. So thank you for, for being here. But commissioners, Jim Smith, Jim Smith, commissioners, and community. So thank you again to the board for the support of the position. We're excited to see how the future unfolds.
Welcome again, Chief Smith.
Welcome, Chief.
All right. Any final public participation? All right. Seeing none. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Mulrooney in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.